All right, this time I'd like to call the meeting to order. Could everyone please pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we'll begin our meeting by approving the agenda. Need a motion to approve the agenda. Steve, second. Carrie, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. All right, now move on to public comment. This is a reminder that this meeting is held in public according to the old meetings law. It's not a public participation meeting. As a board, we value input from the public, but in order to address your comments, questions more efficiently, we would encourage you to use the district's protocol for resolving concerns instead of waiting for a board education meeting. I will call for all speakers who have signed up to speak. Each speaker will be given up to three minutes to talk. All speakers must adhere to this timeframe. At the three-minute mark, we will politely thank you for your comments. Speakers cannot defer their time slots to another person. Also, speakers are asked to refrain from discussing matters that involve district personnel and/or a particular student's record. School staff and students should not be named during public comment. Speakers are also asked to avoid repetitive comments. All remarks should be addressed to the Board of Education directly. Community members are able to ask board members questions. However, community members should know that the board members will not engage in conversation or answer questions during this portion of the meeting. The Board of Education will respond to questions in one of three ways: on its webpage, directly to individuals through a phone call or written letter, or to the public in future meetings. A copy of all written correspondence should be given to the board clerk before the end of the board of education meeting. After I've called on those who have signed up to speak, they should come to the table microphone and state their name and address for the board's clerk. Do we have anybody that signed up? Okay, thank you. All right, at this time, we'll move on. Is there any board member that would like to make any comment? Ron?
Tim Iwood. One of the great traditions at Wayne, I think, is teacher recognition night, in which our senior athletes get to choose a teacher to come to an athletic event and be recognized for their contributions. So far this year, we've had two of those nights that I'm aware of. So I would like to congratulate the following teachers: Andy Strzec, Kristin Toscano, Alyssa Edwards, Renee Saba, and Scott Briggs. They were all recognized by a member of the girls soccer team. Steve Howell, Mike Elliott, Lance Johnson, and Jill Johnson, were all recognized by a member of the golf team. So my congratulations to those teachers for making a difference in the lives of our students. The second comment I have deals with Ford County. I attended the Ford County Board of Directors meeting a week ago Tuesday, and it looks like going forward from this day on, the Ford County office will be open five days a week. In the past, the office hours were scheduled so that coverage was only there for four days, but we're going to be open five days a week. It also looks like the current director is going to retire in January and that there's a strong potential that we may be using a professional search person to fill the director's seat. And the last thing, it looks like we are also going to hire an outside auditing firm to audit the Ford County books. The other comment I have about Ford County, I had the opportunity to attend last night's speaker, and I don't know if Pam or Jeremy is going to say anything about it or not, but the speaker last night was Dr. LaBelle Brown, who is recently was named New York State Superintendent of Schools. He is a superintendent of schools at Ithaca, and during his time at Ithaca, they have made tremendous strides in the academic achievement of the Ithaca School District, as well as the culture and climate of the school district. One of the things that he mentioned is that they have seen a remarkable increase in the number of students participating in extracurricular activities, and they felt that that was having a positive effect, not only on their soon achievement, but also on the school climate. Now, I know that we have reports during the year, for example, from Tony. We get a report on our athletic participation, but I don't know that we track the other areas of our extracurricular engagement. And certainly, being in FBLA, or Legos Club, or Science Olympiad is equally as important to our students as participating in athletics. So that's something that we may want to consider doing in the future, taking a look at how many of our students are engaged in extracurricular activities and whether there's any hard evidence that we can come up with that that improves not only their academic achievement, but their attachment and their behavior in school. So, thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Anyone else? Carrie?
Just a reminder, as liaison for the primary and elementary, that Grandparent Special Friends Day at the primary school is coming up, and this year, it's going to be over a three-day period, October 18th, 19th, and 20th. Most of the time period for the day for each of those days is from 9:30 to 10:30 in the morning. So if any of the board members want to come and just welcome grandparents, guests, either let me know so I can let school know, or we can coordinate which day so we can make that work. And then, the only other thing is I have a Ford County Legislative Committee meeting on Saturday, October 21st, from 8:00 to 10:00. And just the elementary school's open house is this upcoming Wednesday at 6:00 PM on the 11th.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Just a little see real quick, for any of us that are going to the NISBA conference this next week, Dr. Brown is doing a session there. So if you want, he was an engaging speaker and really gave you food for thought.
Anyone else? Okay. All right, now I'll ask Dr. Kelvin to provide his report to the board.
Hey, good evening, board. Just a couple of things. We're going to first start out tonight with some highlights. And first, we want to highlight some of the great things that happened at our homecoming weekend. Honestly, best way to sum it up was homecoming was really great. A lot of great things occurred throughout the week. Our kids did a great job. It was wonderful to see our community come together and celebrate Wayne Central. In terms of outcomes from the weekend, our varsity football team, if you were there for the late-night game, we really, it turned out really, really awesome. We had 11-6 win over East Rochester-Gananda. Our girls JV soccer, 2-0 win over Marion. Boys JV soccer, 9-0 win over Pennyan. The girls varsity soccer, 10-0 win over Geneva. And boys varsity soccer, 2-0 win over Pennyan. And just, we want to congratulate all of the students who were involved in these activities, in those teams, in those contests. They all did a really wonderful job. We also had the Wayne, at the Wayne Primary School, students who participated in the 22nd Annual Fund Run. Lots of our little kids, starting early across country, they just did a really great job. Students in first and second grade ran a mile, and kindergartners ran a half-mile as their parents and staff were there cheering them on and encouraging them on to keep going. Just a really wonderful way to see our students participating in physical education. It was just really, really fantastic, so really awesome. Want to let the board know and the community know that it only was where we're recognized by our community, but also outside of the community. We had some really nice, just little notes that came to my office today. Senator Helmings, if you remember, she was here last year congratulating some of our kids. She saw some articles in the newspaper and just sent me a nice little note to say congratulations. It was great to hear about the great things that are happening at Wayne. Honestly, she is a friend of Wayne's and wants to really stay connected. So I just wanted to share that with you all today. Another really awesome highlight, tonight on Channel 8, on Channel 13, and tomorrow on Channel 10 and 13, I believe, in the...
10 and 8 tomorrow, and tonight was 8 and possibly 13.
Thank you, thank you. We had, we got some really great coverage. October 9th and 13th is our school lunch week, and we have been featured by Trade Talk for innovative approaches to school lunches. And Trade Talk is really, it's a really nice national group that really highlights best practices in school lunch programs. And I did put on the table an article that was recently put out by Trade Talk, and it highlights Wayne for the great job that we're doing. They featured our MyWay Cafe entries, including the macaroni and cheese bar, the baked potato bar, the noodles and rice bowls, burger bar. We also were featured for the Farm Fresh Food and Work with the local food hubs to get vegetables for local farmers. Students even help us prep some of the fall harvests. And today's, the news folks came out today to film us, and our amazing food service director, Nikki Wilson, who did a great job. So if you're looking for some of those pieces tonight on the news, I'm sure you'll see them. There are also, some of them already started to be posted online. And we're just really proud of the work that our food service and our food department is doing. Nikki and her team are really doing one fantastic job. So really, really awesome. All right, so aside from that, I'm going to switch gears for just a moment. We have a student representative with us today. Alyssa, Alyssa, excuse me, is with us today. She's a senior. She is in the New Visions program at our Wayne Figure Lakes Voces. She is also the Assets Club President and the President of Project Reach. She is also a member of the TIES Program and the National Honor Society. She is a student who participates in IB and AP courses. And she is also, in her free time, she's captain of the softball team. And she holds down three jobs. You know, one that shuts Applebells, Heitzelmann's, and Rochester General Hospital. So this is really an all-around, well-rounded student. We're just glad to have her tonight. And she's going to give us our student representative's report.
Sure, so, hi, I'm Alyssa Griffo. I'm a senior here at Wayne High School. So I was asked last week to come speak to you guys, and I was really honored to have this opportunity because I, one, love our school very much. I really, really enjoy going here. I have a very close relationship with all my teachers, and I am very happy with all my classes. I am an AP and IB student, so I take, I took two AP courses last year. I took AP Language and AP Physics, both really challenging courses, and I really enjoyed them a lot. I'm also an IB student, so our Inter-Baccalaureate program is for two years. So I'm an IB 20th Century, and I love that very much. I love my teacher, I love our discussions. It's really worldly-based, and I like that we have a free-thinking opportunity, and that's really awesome. So I'm really happy to do that. One really cool thing is I'm in the New Visions program, which is a really awesome program, and I encourage any student who wants to go with medical field to go in this program. So at around 11 o'clock, I leave every day, and I go to New Visions at New Wayne Hospital. And I take two classes over there. I take in an end-of-physiology, and I also take English composition through FLCC there, which is really awesome. I love it there. And then the three other days, so we, on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, we go on clinicals, which is really awesome. So I have the experience to go in the hospital and interact with patients and doctors and physicians assistants. And so that's really awesome. Tomorrow, actually, I'm going to the PACU, the post-institutional care unit, and I really love to go up there, so I'm very excited about that. I'm pursuing, after high school, a career in physicians' assistant studies. I'm looking at Rochester Institute of Technology as my top choice. I did apply early decision there, which I'm very excited about. And I just applied, so I'm really looking forward to hearing back from them. And I want to specialize in critical care cardiothoracic medicine. So I'm very excited about that. I actually had the wonderful opportunity, we have some awesome internship coordinators at the high school, Michelle Beland is my anchor. And in May, I did my internship at Rochester General Hospital. I did 55 hours in labor and delivery. So I got to see a ton of C-sections, I got to assist in a few deliveries, and that was really, really cool. But I don't really want to do labor and delivery, so I realized that wasn't my thing. It was really interesting, but I'm more of a fast-paced, I like cutthroat, all type of new technologies. So I did an internship in a medical intensive care unit over the summer, and that was absolutely amazing. I saw codes, I saw, as you'd be so surprised, the things I saw. It was absolutely wonderful. I loved every second of it, and I would work nights there. And then, so from like 9:00 to 3:00, I'd work at Chute Devil Mill. And then from like 5:00 to 10:00, I'd work at High School's barbecue pit, the local barbecue pit, which is awesome, I love it there too. And then from 10:30 at night till 7:00 in the morning, I worked at the hospital. That was really awesome. I did that because my dad recently lost his job last year, so that was really tough on my family, and I had to help them out. So I got three jobs, and it was, I am very grateful because now I'm definitely a stronger person and more mature. And in that time period, I had to grow up a lot, so I'm very thankful for that. Yeah, so like, some of the things going on at school is, I'll be at homecoming last week, which was really awesome. One thing really cool about the senior class is we're very close and we're very engaged with each other. And we include everybody. We had a senior breakfast on the first day of school, which was really awesome. We had basically the whole grade there, so that was super cool. Homecoming, we had that lighting delay, but it was cool. We got to stay up together and meet the teachers. We have a cool fan section, and that's really awesome. We have the new schedule this year. And I really personally love the new schedule because I like 55 minutes. I feel like I focus better in 55 compared to the 80 minutes. So that was really awesome for me. And we also have learning labs this year, which is super cool. And because I go to New Visions, I do have study blocks in the morning. So during those study blocks, I'm able to go to learning labs and get help on any type of my homework. I just submitted my college essay, and Mrs. Doren actually has a learning lab that period. So for the past couple of days, we've been going over my college essay, and it was really awesome, and I'm really grateful for that opportunity. So that's basically some of the stuff I do. One of the bigger things I do here at school than that many people know is freshman year, I started a project called Project Reach, and it stands for Reasons Everyone Around Can Help. And it's a domestic violence and sexual assault advocacy group. And what we do is we raise money. I go and speak to different schools and communities. And I spoke at the Wayne County Courthouse last year on behalf of domestic violence and sexual assault. So some of our past events, we did a domestic violence soccer game last year, which we're doing this year, and it's going to be next week on Wednesday. And we are having, the Rochester Rhinos are coming to our game, and they're going to warm up with our varsity boys players. And they are going to help us support our cause. They're really awesome doing that. We're going to have some food trucks, we're going to have all of our donations collected at the game. The food trucks are donating 40% of their profits to a domestic violence advocacy group called the Victory Resource Center for the Finger Lakes. We're having T-shirt donations and having some local relief groups come out and give information. So that's really something cool. And I hope you guys can all come. It starts at 6:00. And we're all supposed to wear purple, so that's cool. And we do, also do a National Purple Day at school, so the whole school wears purple. And that was a really great outcome last year, everyone gets a purple ribbon. And we just have like a statistic a day for that week about domestic violence. We also do sexual assault fundraisers too. We did a lacrosse game last year, similar to the Cradle for Cure. So that's just another thing. So that's pretty much all I do. I feel so insignificant.
No comment.
Well, Alyssa, let me thank you for coming. I'm not sure if board members have questions, but I certainly would like to comment and say to you, job well done, and, you know, listening to your story. And this is my first time meeting you, and I want to tell you, I appreciate you coming tonight, and I'm very proud of all your accomplishments. And thank you for giving, giving us feedback tonight. It's a pleasure, pleasure.
Thank you for having me.
Yes, board members, a nice one.
Just thanks for fitting us into your schedule.
It's been, by the way, that was one of the most bubbly and fun presentations I think we've ever had. Great job, thank you. But it has been duly noted that you didn't bring any donuts inside.
I know. I work tomorrow.
That's okay.
My daughter's a PA, and if that's what your passion is, you are on a track to do a lot of very wonderful things. And, you know, I'd like to see where you are in 10 years because I think you're going to light the world on fire.
I hope so, that's the plan. Yeah, I'm very passionate about medicine, and the PA, that was, I wanted to be a doctor for a really long time. And I recently found out about the KIA studies probably in December last year, and I loved it. I fell in love with it. I fell in love with all the PAs I shadowed, and I'm really grateful.
It's a great career. It's a great career, so that's what it is too.
Thank you.
Give her a round of applause.
We probably should take a break because you can't compete with that.
What are you doing your senior studies project on? Your senior project?
Through FLCC, through New Visions, we do our project based on just anything in the medical field we can pick. And I'm probably going to do mine on necrotizing fasciitis.
I'm good for you.
Yeah, which is a flesh-eating disease. So I'm definitely probably going to...
I want to be on her thing.
Well, thank you so much for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Right.
Thank you.
Just shift gears a little bit real quick here, board. I wanted to just make sure that we provide some more clarity around our enrollment data. Recently, we shared with you our data from our district. After kind of looking even more in-depth at our data, we noticed that there were some exclusions that were reported in our data. And so we disaggregated that data to remove the exclusions. The reason why I want to really make sure we share this and clarify this is because we have been comparing what's happening this year to our study. And our study is really, the study that was recently done, really looks at those students who are truly enrolled here at Wayne. So we had some exclusions that were included, and we pulled that out of the data. And we want to kind of just share that a little bit tonight. So some of the exclusions that were, the four that were included, first of all, we had consortium students that were included in our data. And consortium students are those students who come, this is for everybody who's listening from other districts and pay tuition to come to our school. Typically, they are our kids with disabilities who come to our district. And so they were counted in some of these numbers. The second is, we had some of our, we had our collective bargaining unit students also included. And one of the benefits that we have here at Wayne is if you teach here or you work here, your kids can come to school here. So they were included in these numbers. The third were our homeless student population, who may not really be from Wayne, but from some other district. And then the third were our foreign exchange students. So we have kids from, you know, other countries who are here in our district. We wanted to really make sure that those, that we really shared students who are actually enrolling, who are from our district, who are attending programs here in our district. So I want to clarify that, as we noticed this past week, some of that information that those four exclusions, exclusions were part of. So Michelle and her team did go through to make sure that we had all those exclusions pulled out. So here is what you will see. So down at the bottom, you see a piece that says previously reported with exclusions. So in our recent reports that we gave to you, those are the numbers that were there. And then underneath it, you have the revised data. It says total enrollment. Everybody see that there? That gives you the actual one without the exclusions. So the first one shares from June 2016. With exclusion, we had 2246. If you look at your last report that was put out, you'll see that number. So once we pulled out all of those, those numbers, the actual number would be 2180 without the exclusion. And then in September of 2016, after that year, we ended up with 2241. And then we went down to 20, we were at 2211. That should not have been negative 3100, actually, I apologize. Negative 31. Okay. So then, you see that underneath there? So it shouldn't say negative 31 there. 31 should be for the next hour, we apologize. So then you have under June 2017, 2194. So from June of 2016, it went to 2194 with June 2017. And then you have 2180. So you, under the 2180, you have a number that says negative 31. So if you subtract the 2180 from the 2211, that would be negative 31. Do you understand where that's coming from? So the first, negative 31, just cross it out, we apologize. Second, under July 2017, number is 2192 with exclusions. Underneath it, with total enrollment, it went down to 2141. So the 2141 is subtracted from the 2211 from September. Do you see that number there we're talking about? Okay? So negative 7. And then in August, we went up a little bit to 2202. And then without exclusions this August, so we were getting kids register in and out, we went down, we went up, excuse me, to 2173. So again, that 2173 is subtracted from the 2211. You understand? So we've got that with 38. Then in September of this year, with the exclusions, you had on the last report 2193. And then under it now, without the exclusions, 2176. So you subtract again, and you get negative 35. Understand that? You're with us still? All right. And then as of October 31st, so we just, now we didn't previously report anything for October, so now here we are. Where we're at now is 2177. So the negative amount is negative 34. Okay? So why do we do this? Again, we wanted to make sure we clarified for our public because this is the data that we were being prepared to in that, in that study. And we wanted to make sure that we didn't include in here kids who really weren't from, you know, the Wayne enrollment. So there, we have kids, for example, in our consortium who are actually helping us, you know, because they, those children come, and they come with a tuition. So they pay for their services that they receive here. And it helps us to raise some of our numbers up. But the reason why we wanted also pull some of these, we want these exclusions out is because this number, the 2177, is the actual number that we're receiving aid from, and that's what we're receiving funds from the state for. So we wanted to make sure that we're all covered with that.
Yeah, but this is to be congratulated.
Any questions on that at all, board? Any question, Ron? Okay. Michelle? Okay. All right.
Or Diana? But we still need to consider those students because we usually do have them when we're talking about, when we're talking about use of the buildings, how much, how many kids are in the buildings. And so we need to make sure we consider that as...
Absolutely, yes.
...board that way too.
Yes.
This just matches up with our reports that we put out.
Correct. So in the future, as we report, we are reporting without the exclusions. Okay? All right, thank you, Michelle. Okay, just an update on our Assistant Superintendent for Business Search. So we have completed our search. We do have a final candidate. And our hope, you know, we are finishing up and completing our negotiation piece there. We have a person that we think might be really good. And what we'd like to do, hopefully, if everything works well, is at our next meeting, we'd like to have that individual, whomever that is, come to the next board meeting and meet the board and meet our public if we're able to get there, basically. Okay? All right, so at this time, I'm going to switch gears now. We have two things we want to share. I'm going to have Greg Adson come up, and he's going to share with us our end-of-year fiscal position. And then I'm going to move out of the way, and Dr. Serkis is going to come and share some pieces around finance, around instruction.
Good evening. So in front of you, you have a slide that summarizes your end financial position for the school year 2016-17. And if you go to the very bottom line, the good news is, at the end of the year, there was $1.5 million left over. And there's some factors that I want to talk to you about that were part of that. And basically, the calculation starts with where we started off in the year. It shows revenues, subtract expenditures. Reserve fund transfers were money from the reserves that we were using to fund the budget. Bus purchases get added back in there because they're included in the expenditure line, even though the money comes at that time from a reserve. So we put it back in there. Carryover encumbrances is the amount that's carried over, things that are ordered from one year that are paid for in the next. So it allows you to carry the money forward, brings us to that subtotal. And then the $950,000 is money that we allocated towards this year's tax levy and revenues. And the unappropriated fund balance of almost $1,008, that's the 4% that by law we're able to hang on to without a designated purpose, which brings us to the 1.5. And there's a couple of factors there. If you remember, a year ago, in the summer, we had approximately 32 staff members that, that left Wayne Central. This was before the retirement incentive. Happened over the summer for a lot of various reasons. And as we were in the process of rightsizing our district, those were positions that did not have to be refilled. So when you took, those salaries were already budgeted because we didn't know those people were leaving. So the salaries were included in the budget, but we weren't going to be paying anybody with that money. That number totaled almost $1.5 million. And then if you remember, during last year's budget process, we offered an incentive to both of our bargaining units for certified and classified staff. And when, at the end, we had to use about $800,000 of that money to pay for the incentive. But that still left us with about $700,000 that contributed to the $1.5 million. So it's kind of an unusual event, that's why I wanted to explain it. I mean, obviously, it's good news for the district that we ended up with that level of money. of money, but that level of money was not built in. Um, the other factor is since our budget this year went down, uh, over two percent, the four percent number, the, the one million seven ninety-nine, you're allowed to keep four percent of the current year. So we actually had to reduce that number by about seventy-five thousand dollars because our previous budget was larger. So those two factors there actually added up to about half of the one point five. The balance of that was money that was, uh, was built in. So, um, if that, if those events hadn't happened, you'd be looking at a bottom line number of about eight, eight hundred thousand. But we were fortunate enough that, um, that occurred. Um, we were able to, um, seize upon that and, and work it to the district's advantage. So that's where, uh, we ended up. And in the board packet, we have a recommendation tonight for the board to authorize moving that one to ERS reserve. Um, a couple of reasons for that recommendation. Uh, first of all, that's the most heavily reused reserve that we've had over the past. We've been using up to about a million dollars a year out of their reserve to pay for our ERS costs. This year we were budgeting not to use it at all, but, um, we've been using that one heavily. There's also been some discussion at Albany, and we're still on the table, uh, for the state to create a TRS reserve, which would also really help us. So, um, if that were to occur, the board could shift some of the money from the ERS reserve into the TRS reserve. And also I know that, uh, the superintendent has, uh, talked about, uh, facilities, uh, repairs that we need to do. So, uh, an upcoming, uh, project, capital project. We currently cannot add any more money to our capital reserve because it's been fully funded. But, uh, if, if moving forward, the district at the next vote, um, asks to create a new capital reserve, the board could always look at the ERS reserve and if you feel it's overfunded by board action, you can move some of that money into the capital reserve. So it gives you a lot of flexibility. So I know I covered a lot with that, but any questions?
Greg, just to refresh my memory. The capital reserve is the only reserve that you can put money in and you can only use it for the ca, a capital improvement project. The other reserves, you can put money in and if something else needs it, we can move it.
Yeah, Carla, I think the, yes, the bus reserve, it's got to be used.
Right, for bus.
But the other ones, right. The other, well, we don't have any, we only have about sixty thousand dollars and we still have it, we just don't have much money.
Okay.
Um, the other reserves, by board action, the board can look at those and they can say that they feel they're overfunded and by board action, um, they can move the money to other reserves if there's a need to do so.
And that's the reserve you feel is, that we should put the money to?
Yes, because we've been using that reserve, that reserve fairly heavily over the past three years. And like I said, if, um, you know, if you do the capital project roughly the size of the one we did last time, which was about fifteen million dollars, you know, last time we used, um, five million dollars from the capital bill to pay the, the local cost. So there was no impact on the taxpayers. So if the project's around that amount of money, and I, and I know the planning's not done yet.
Right, I was going to say if. We haven't gotten there yet, so we don't want people.
And I'm just giving you hypothetical. You could, there's a million and a half dollars left in the capital reserve from, from before. You can't add to that, but you can still spend that money. And you can word, um, creation of a new reserve, taking the, uh, what's left from the old and transferring in. So taking the old money and then if you were to take this money, I mean, that would put you at about three million dollars towards capital needs if, if that's the board's desire. So it gives you the most flexibility, but it's, it's, you know, I'm talking with the auditors, we feel that's the best place to put it in the ERS reserve.
And our auditors also did recommend moving that reserve as well.
This is a, the, with the exception of the unappropriated fund balance, this is the first school budget seventeen, eighteen. In how many years have we haven't taken money out of our reserves?
Um.
At least six or seven, eight?
I was going to say, I was going to say four or five, but it, you know, it's, it's been quite a while. I mean, you know, it was kind of our hope when Rick Tims was here that possibly over a three-year period, we'd be able to wean ourselves off. And through the events that took place last year, first starting in the summer that I just talked about, then the incentive, I mean, we really made up a lot of ground that we couldn't have anticipated early on, but really helped us kind of get things back in, in order financially for us.
And the other thing with the incentive is because people did choose the incentive and we right-sized staff, it tilted the proportion of our budget that went to administrative versus instruction. So it looked like, like we were spending more on it, on administration. But in fact, we had the retirement incentive, so we had less instructional salaries to pay for, so tilted that, that proportion more.
Right, right. So, any other questions on this piece?
Also the reserve, uh, these reserves.
Right, so tonight in your packet, uh, or in the board packet, there's, um, you have a copy of, um, the reserve report. And I'm passing around, um, a revised one and I'll talk to you about the revisions that are included. So we're asking the board with tonight's packet to, uh, accept this report. And, uh, if the board, uh, does that.
Excuse me, yours, I believe, kind of looks.
Yeah. Yeah, this, this one's got, that's, that's the one that'll be on our website that Amy's, uh, really kind of.
Same information, just a pretty.
Right. So we'll be asking the board to, uh, accept the report. And once the board does that, we will add this report to our website. Um, we do go over our reserve information a couple of times a year by policy. And now, um, the state wants it to appear on our website. Um, you know, once it's there, the report will be updated annually. If you turn to page seven and eight, starts on page seven, I just want to talk to you about the ABLR reserve, the Employee Benefit Reimbodability Reserve Fund. So it starts on seven, and then if you go to eight, uh, it'll say projected usage. That number's been updated. So when this information was previously shared with the board, it was, uh, in the last school year, and I'm trying to show you guys what potentially we were going to use in, in, by the end of June thirtieth. And the old number was different, the one sixty-five thousand. We paid those costs, but we didn't have to use the reserve to do what we have to do without the general fund, which allows us to keep the money in reserve. So what I've done is I've, uh, updated the report to reflect what we're projecting that reserve to be used for, for seventeen, eighteen. So shifting that number to, uh, fourteen thousand. So the fact that we didn't have to use it was a good thing because it left the money there for a future purpose. Um, but there is, um, a potential of fourteen thousand to be used going forward. If you flip to page eleven, uh, under the tax surcharge reserve, um, once again, um, that projected usage used to say zero because at the time we had no outstanding tax cert cases and, you know, a tax cert reserve is really kind of an adder to the fact that you don't really know you're going to use it until somebody files a claim on you. It's not like some of the other ones where you can pre-plan to use it. Um, but it, I believe it was the last organs, we talked in the board executive session about potential, uh, case coming up. And if that case does come to fruition, um, that number there would be required refund. So I've updated the report to reflect that. And then if you flip to the last page, fourteen, uh, the previous report under audited balance did not have a two thousand and seventeen number listed. So I have corrected that and shown the unaudited two thousand and seventeen. So three changes from, um, from previously, just, right. And like I said, this is kind of a, a living document that will be updated, you know, annually, but, um, we're wanting to get it on the website as per, um, like regulations.
As Greg said, each year we will go in, you know, deep, work through the budget process and the issue will be clear on how much you're planning to use from reserves. And we'll update this report every year online. So anyone in our community can go on and see how we plan to use our reserves from year to year. Want to make sure we're very transparent on that.
So the pre-copy that you have there will need to be updated to reflect what I just passed out, but, um, it'll have, so that it'll look like the, that one, but it'll have the updated information on the website. I mean, I'll work on that, I'll just accomplish. You got some time tonight to work on that? Um, she's the one, she can take the credit for making it look. I, I could never do that.
Hey, young girl.
I'm sure she's got time.
Is this just going to be a link, um, like, under the board or on the district page? Do you know where it will be?
It'll probably be under the district, for district information, for required information.
Okay.
Right. Uh, also in the board packet tonight, there's a budget transfer, um, that we're asking the board to approve. That budget transfer, uh, reflects, um, transfers at year end for the sixteen, seventeen school year. And if you were to look in your board packet, the vast majority of those are all salary-related. Because of the incentives that we offered and not knowing who was going to take it, we had to move money around within the budget, within the salary code, because incentive was paid out of the salary code in which the person that took the incentive got paid. So we had to move some money around. There was a couple of, of other transfers that were, um, part of, um, the building to Brown's apartment for some of the work we were doing over the summer. And there was one for debt service where when we created the budget last year, we had not done our borrowing, so we had just had to ship money from interest to principal. The money was there, it just needed to be shifted over. But the majority of those are all related to paying the incentive and getting money in proper salary codes.
Any questions at all, board? What do you do? Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
And it's time for Syracuse to come on up today to see us. So board, we, uh, just tonight, to, uh, finish in terms of our section tonight of the report, um, Dr. Syracuse is here, he's going to share with us some, uh, some data. So in our previous presentation, we talked about grade six, grade seven, and eight performance on, on last year's, uh, nearest state exams. And we had a question from the board as to how we're doing from year to year, um, with different cohorts of students. And so, uh, Dr. Syracuse and his team have gone through and disaggregated the data. I just kind of want to share a little bit about how, what the data is demonstrating right now.
Sure. So tonight we're just going to take a, a different look at the three-year results. And the way we're going to do that is we're going to, we're going to use a reverse trend. And a reverse trend just means that we'll take a look for an sample at our current eighth graders. How did they do when they were seventh graders? How did they do when they were sixth graders? This kind of will help us filter out that opt-out piece where, um, when we traditionally share the data, we're looking from year to year. So we do look at trends, but we don't know who's taking it. You know, prior to the opt-out movement, we just assumed that ninety-seven percent of the kids took it because ninety-seven percent of the kids in fact did take it. So we didn't have an issue with comparatives. Um, a cohort is very simply a, a bound group under like constraints. So in this case, would be a group of kids who in eighth grade took the exam in seventh grade and in sixth grade. If they didn't take it in, in each of those three years, they're not counted in any of the data. So we factor out people who didn't take it over the, that same three-year period. And so for that reason, the cohorts for the trend data are going to be smaller than the, than the cohorts in any single year. So when you, that, that's cohort data versus annual data. And I'm going to give it you in raw numbers versus percentages because these are smaller numbers in some cases under, most, all cases under a hundred kids we're talking about. And in one case as low as thirty-five kids. So I think it'll just show you with a little bit more clarity what's going on with this particular cohort. We do, uh, as, as I go into it though, we do have to compare with caution because although the kids are the same, the exam in seventh grade isn't the same as the exam in sixth grade, isn't the same as the exam in, in fifth grade. And that would be the three years that we're looking at. And you recall that last year, I relayed a concern from the commissioner about comparing two thousand and fifteen data with two thousand and sixteen data because in two thousand and sixteen, some of the, um, criteria for the assessment changed. In other words, there were no time constraints, uh, in two thousand and sixteen. And those, uh, those same kids were under time constraints in two thousand and fifteen. And that would be the first year of each of the data. So that's what that's going to look like. I want to take just a second to orient you to the graph. Um, the purple on the bottom, those are our students at mastery. Uh, yellow is proficient. The gray area is, um, will be our twos. And then the red area on top, that's our lowest performing students. Those are our ones. By way of example, the state says that students scoring at the mid-range in that, in those gray bars would be in need of academic intervention. So what we're looking at first, we'll look at ELA first, then we'll take a look at math. We'll start at eighth grade and we'll work our way back down to fifth. We stopped at fifth grade because for a three-year cohort, these exams begin in third grade. So we can't go any, any further than that. So what you see here is these kids in two thousand and fifteen, you know, we had a mastery rate of twenty-one students. That dips to nine, um, students in sixteen and it stays at nine in seventeen. One of the ways that the graph also gets broken down by the state is within that mastery bar, there are students who score, um, very high, students who score in the middle, and students who score very low. So in two thousand and fifteen of the, those twenty-one students, twenty of them scored in the low mastery rate. So they're probably shifting back in two thousand and sixteen to the proficiency rate. The boxes across the top is typically, we like to know how many kids scored at three and four. So it's going to help you to see it went from thirty-four to thirty to thirty-three. So a little dip and then a rise back to where it was. So this is how all the graphs will look. Um, whether, before I go to the next ones, is there any question?
What are the little boxes again?
So the little boxes are, are mastery plus proficient. So threes and fours. Yeah. Because I don't want you guys to have to do the.
Math in our head.
Math as you go. Really shooting for proficiency.
We're graduates of Wayne Central.
I know you can do it. So in seventh grade, you see, um, uh, you see a slight rise from fifteen to sixteen and then another dip. The nice thing about the grade seven is that you see in two thousand and fifteen, we had twenty students scoring at a one. Um, and we were able to shrink that down to nine and ten in the, in the, in the next two years. In this cohort, there were ninety-one students. And I meant to say, I, I was going to tell you guys in each cohort, how many kids. In that eighth grade cohort, there were sixty-six total students. And in this one, there were ninety-one students who took the exam in each of the, the previous three years. Now, grade six, you're going to see that we were, we had thirty-three students in two thousand and fifteen, thirty-six students in two thousand and sixteen, and twenty-six students at the proficiency, proficiency and mastery rate in two thousand and seventeen. That is a dip that we're watching. Um, however, I will tell you that recently the commissioner, um, noted that the grade six ELA across the state, a lot of schools took a hit. Matter of fact, the, the grade six results were lower this year statewide. So it's not a, it's not too much a Wayne Central phenomenon. Well, it's a Wayne Central phenomenon, but it's a statewide phenomenon, which, I mean, I guess I was relieved to hear that.
Yeah, our mastery level is still one up.
Yeah, our mastery level actually doubled, um, but, you know, we really want to get that proficiency rate up too. So grade five, this will be our last, uh, ELA, um, trend data. We had eighty-eight students. Uh, you see that, you know, again, if you look at the red across the top, we had twenty-one students scoring at a level one. We were able to shrink that to nine. And then again, the next year, we're right back up to twenty-one. That's a, a little bit concerning, of course. Um, but the mastery rate did double from fifteen to sixteen and stay right up there in seventeen. So, so that's good. And then we move over to math. Oh, this is math eight. I mean, I think, uh, we've, we've talked about math eight enough. You guys understand what's going on there? Um, just to, uh, just to give a, a number to it, we had, um, fifty-eight students challenged the Algebra I exam. So they took the Algebra I exam instead of the Math eight exam. So this cohort, cohort only has thirty-five students in it total. And, uh, you know, you can see a, a downward trend toward that, toward that eighth grade year. But it's, it's really kind of tough, uh, with thirty-five students over three years to draw too many conclusions.
Mainly because they, and especially in the grade eight, those students who maybe would have been in a, um, a level three or a level four, didn't take the test. So they're not there because they were taking a higher level test.
Correct. And they're also, just to remind you, they're also taken out of the seventh grade data and the sixth grade data because we don't have three data points for them. We can't do the trend. So, um, the whole thing is skewed a little bit. I mean, it's fair to say, these are the same thirty-five kids. We do see a dip from nine students at proficiency and mastery to three to two. So, I mean, that's a real dip among those students. But we are again factoring out quite a few students who, uh, would definitely have a, a positive impact on the overall results. So then in seventh grade, um, you see kind of that bell curve again up and down across the board. But fifty-one students in grades five and six were proficient and better. And we did see a little bit of a dip. And we did see a little bit of a dip and an increase in our ones at seventh grade. Sixth grade, you see, uh, nice flat, consistent results. Uh, the mastery rate does some nice things in two thousand seventeen. And the, uh, our level ones are lowest levels. We see those decrease from sixteen to seventeen, so there's some good things happening in math at grade six. And then grade five, uh, very consistent across the board. Um, sixty out of ninety-five students are proficient and better, um, pretty consistent across the board. Um, you can't really say they're, they're the same, so if you look at the mastery, uh, twenty-six kids, twenty-four kids, twenty-two kids, doesn't necessarily mean those are all the same kids across the board, because kids are right on the border of threes and fours. So, um, one year you'll be a high three, the next year you might be a low four. So that's a different way to kind of look at the three-eight results, which would give you some trend stuff. I will tell you that, you know, I share these reports with the building principals, they use them with their leadership teams. Um, we are gonna continue, uh, I've talked with the seventh and eighth grade math and, um, ELA department chairs. Um, we've shared data, the principals have had conversations. Um, Mr. Smith is, is creating some action plans focused on, uh, standards that they think they can, um, help the kids better reach, um, before the next admittance of the exam in seventh and eighth grade. We're only in our second year of a K-five math series. Um, we're in our first year of a six-eight, uh, math series, and that team is pretty excited about that. We're in our first year of a K-six ELA series, it's journeys and then it's collections in, in, in grade six. So we have a lot of, a lot of, uh, things going on to help work on and improve these results. And in fact, at our next step development day on October twenty-seventh, all of these new programs will have some time, uh, work in, with some experts and workshops to, uh, build their proficiency with, with those tools. I would take any questions you might have.
Thank you for all that work, Joe. I know it was not easy, but-
You're welcome.
It took, it allows us to track the same group of kids so that, so that we are not, you don't get the distortions of who drops, uh, opts out and who, who opts in. And the second thing that occurs to me is if everybody would opt in, it would give the board and the staff a lot better perceptions of how we're doing year to year to year to year.
Yeah, I, I, I would advocate that all the kids take the assessment. I think, um, it's a learning experience just taking the assessment. I think it makes kids, you know, more reflective learners when they challenge themselves with these things. Um, this year, the assessments are gonna be two admittance. You'll hear a lot of people say two days versus three days. That's really inaccurate. It's ninety minutes, you know, it's not a day. Um, and, but they're gonna be, uh, making it much more attractive, I hope, for families to opt back in.
It really, you know, for someone who has to pull this data from their teachers and put this on an Excel sheet, when you get what we call a ninety-nine, which means the student didn't take the test, it doesn't leave the incoming teacher with a heck of a lot to start with, especially at the middle school level or at the high school level, because you don't have a, a start, um, universal screening or something to start with at the beginning of the year that you do in elementary. And it's really helpful for teachers so that they can do their work and figure out what goals they set for themselves. And if they have this data, it helps them say, okay, this child got a one, I'd like to see them get at least to a two, or they're at a three, I'd like to see if they could get to a low four. And that's part of the teacher's goal. But if they don't have the data of where the student fell, it leaves them in a real quandary as to where to, where to start with the kids. So I, you know, I think people did have a, a legitimate complaint a few years ago, but I really think that pendulum from parent's perspective needs to swing back the other way, so that this data is valued and used and it isn't just a test for kids. There is a value to it, to a district and to our teaching staff.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
So, board, tonight in terms of board business, uh, that, that's all we have in terms of reports. In terms of board business, we are looking for approval on budget transfers, we're in fund balance recommendations, and the high school, middle school extra classroom activity fund. And then in terms of the consent agenda tonight, we have personal action that we are looking for approval on. CPSC recommendations, the recent board meeting minutes, audit committee, um, meeting minutes. And then there is a gift, uh, several gifts rather than a there. And then finally, the policies cooperative bids for transportation, parks, and supplies. Okay? All set?
Yeah.
All right, board, thank you for your time. All set?
Thank you.
All right, this time we'll move through our action items listed on our agenda. I need a motion to approve the budget transfer of six hundred and thirty-six thousand one hundred and ninety-seven dollars and ninety-five cents. Bill? Second. Carla? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Need a motion to approve the year-end fund balance recommendation? Matt? Second. Carrie? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. I need a motion to approve the high school and middle school extra curriculum, our extra classroom activity funds. Steve? Second. Pam? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. I need a motion to approve the reserve funds plan. Carrie? Second. Pam? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. All right, need a motion to approve the consent agenda? Ron? Second. Pam? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. All right, we will move on to the committee reports. Uh, audit committee, Matt?
Yeah, we met last week and most of the discussion was regarding our claims auditors reports, which were attached to the minutes, which we just approved. Our next meeting is October twelfth by thirty, this room. And we will be going over, we'll have in, uh, a representative of the EFR group who is our internal auditor, and they will present an internal audit and risk assessment drafts. And that's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you. Policy committee, Carrie?
We had our first meeting tonight. We went over, um, policy fifty-six sixty. Um, there's just some more state and federal language changes that we needed to add to it. And then we also, um, went over policy seventy-five twenty-one and, um, just making sure the language of the NARCAN was in there. And then just making sure that that policy language and the language, um, from policy seventy-five thirteen is just consistent. So our next policy meeting is November ninth at six o'clock in this room.
Thank you.
Yep.
Wellness committee, Carla?
Um, we have not met yet.
Okay. And communications committee, Jeremy?
Uh, we met tonight. Uh, we had a discussion, we were trying to figure out our charge for the year. We were looking at all of the ways we've, as a district, have been putting our information out. So our decision was we are going to stay as a committee, but we are going to postpone any more meetings till something comes up that we need to blast out to the public in a different way. And, um, we would also like to take on, if it's okay with the board, sending out the personal correspondences for, you know, like Bronn, tonight, first congratulations to the teachers. We would like to be in charge of writing those letters from the board, if that's okay with everybody here. And that's it.
That's all, Carla.
Well, he can still be his own.
Okay, um, board president comments. I just have one comment. Uh, my mother just shared with me the other day that she, well, she lives in Brown Square and she has, uh, a grandparent there that, um, made a comment to her about the, she has to pick up her child over at, uh, WP. And she really liked the new entry method, how to get in and out of there. She thought it was a lot, well-improved. So I just wanted to share that. Did my mom's a parent of her, Todd, so I'm like, yeah, ninety-one, you know?
How old is she now?
Uh, she'll be ninety-two coming up. So, all right, anything else? So let's see, let's move on. Uh, need a motion to enter into executive session, discuss the performance of a particular staff member and discipline record of student.
And possible litigation.
And possible litigation. Contract negotiations also as well. All right, Jeremy? Second. Steve?